Welcome, everybody, to the Zone and Board of Appeals meeting, April 12th, 2022. My name is Marty Akins, I'm the chairman. Board members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, Mr. Hemel, and Mr. Frankel. Could I have a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of May, what was that, 24th?
March 22nd.
March 22nd.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the minutes of the meeting from March 27th to 2020.
Second.
Off to a great start.
Yeah, awesome. I know, I said 19 something the other day, now whoa, whoa, whoa. Whole business, ZBA 2191, DCBT Architect for variance to convert the existing single-family one-half-story home into a two-and-a-half-story duplex, two-and-a-half-story rare edition, closed curb cut for driveway in the right yard with five to six parking spaces, 114 Curtis Ave. Is the applicant a representative here?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Take an oath, if you could, Mr. Chin.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Board Member. I'm here to present 114 Curtis Ave. Since the last submission, we have made significant change, reducing the size of the footprint and erecting a second floor over the existing footprint. So now the FAR compliant dimensional setback, we're requesting a finding at this point. So we reduce by 900 square feet total, so right now the FAR is 0.33.
Yep. I think it did everything that I was looking for. Let's see what the board thinks. I know we wanted to see if we could reduce this and make it fit, but Mr. O'Brien, any questions?
Not at this time.
Mr. Chin?
Just one question, Bonnie, do you, on the left-hand side of the house where there's eight-feet-six driveway, are you planning to continue to keep that driveway going to the garage for access to that garage, or are you taking the garage down in that left corner?
We're leaving it alone on that side, and the new parkings will be on the right side of the house.
You show a vehicle on the left side?
Yeah.
One vehicle. So is that going to remain as a two-minute drive?
Yeah, remain as existing.
So that goes all the way back to the garage?
Existing, existing right now.
Yeah, it is. But you want a new driveway on the right side and a curb cut?
Right.
What do you say we get some green space back on that side? You're not going to use the garage yourself, right?
Enclosing the curb cut and turn that into a green space?
No, 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 no. You can use it up to the house, to the end of the house.
Okay.
Don't, try to get rid of some of that back there, and let's get some more grass back there.
Sure, sure, we can do that.
And you still got your park in there.
Okay.
Yeah, the garage is staying, but they don't use it.
Yep.
That's just like it's a big giant shed right now, yeah.
Yeah, my only concern there was using all of that left side of the backyard for more parking, because there's a garage there and there's a driveway there, and it ends up with, you know, quite a bit of bitumerness in cars on the lot.
Yeah.
Sure, we can reduce that, yeah.
And that still gives them like at least six spaces. They got plenty of parking, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Depending on the cars. Thank you, Mr. Chin. Mr. Hemel?
Well, that was going to be my question, so I guess we'll make it part of this deal that the left-side parking will stop on the radius of the house, dimension of the house?
Yeah. Mr. Frankel?
Now, I don't believe I sat on this the first time, but I have reviewed the papers and don't know what you were asking, but I'm fine with it, with that cleaning up the back-left, so it doesn't look like a car lot.
Very good. All right, let me ask with these changes if anyone wants to speak in favor, now that we had a new set of changes. Anyone want to speak in favor? First call?
If anybody is looking to speak, you can use the reactions button, the virtual hand raise, if you're calling in on the phone, star nine, or just turn on your screen, give us a wave, or send me a chat directly to the host. It only sends a chat to the host, you can't chat with anybody else. We have a phone number, Mr. Chairman, 9014.
9014, where are we? There we go. Want to unmute yourself? Yeah. Who's this? You got your hand up?
Go ahead, user on the phone, 266-9014, go ahead.
Hello? Hello, last call.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, hold on.
John Sullivan.
All right, Sullivan, you an attorney?
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
I thought you said anybody that wants to...
No, I do, I want you to speak. No, 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 you're fine. I want you to speak, I just want you to take an oath, if you could, Mr. Chin, please.
Yes, sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
I do.
Okay, you have the floor.
Okay, my name is John Sullivan, I live at 120 Curtis Ave, the house at about 114. I have several issues on this matter. Personal issue is...
I asked if you wanted to speak in favor.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear it, it was breaking out. I'll wait until you...
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Second call.
Not seen yet.
Third call? Call up how the hearing closed.
The original correspondent.
The original correspondent said, I read into the record, that's it.
Thank you, Sam.
Now we'll call up how the hearing closed. Anyone opposed or undecided, you're up now, where'd you go? Now where'd you go?
Just send them the request to unmute, go ahead.
Hello?
Yep, you're back up, how's that?
All right, very good, sorry about that.
Oh, that's fine.
Thank you, this is, yeah, this is John Sullivan, thank you for giving me a chance to share what you guys, like I said, I have several issues why I oppose this. First issue is being, like I said, I live alongside there, with all that asphalt on the side of the house, the excess water is going to be coming into my driveway, that's a personal reason why I can, you know, it's going to kill... Yes, on the right side.
All right.
I'm in 120 Curtis Ave, and my parents have rose bushes out along the fence here, and that will destroy them. But my biggest concern is the parking. Now, with this extra curb cut, they say it's only going to lose, you know, another parking spot out front, but it's going to lose more than that, because all these people that park in front from the building are going to end up, and anybody that comes to visit these people in this house is going to end up parking on Washington Court here on the side, which turns the street into a one-lane street.
Yeah, they have six parking spaces, you do know that, right?
Yes, but they're not six parking spots for public.
No, for them, for private, right.
Exactly.
Right, and they need four, and they got six.
Right, so I believe that's excessive parking there, and it's going to force extra people to park out on Washington Court, which turns that into a one-lane. Cars can't get up and down until somebody pulls over and lets the next car go by.
Mr. Sullivan, I'm just missing something here. You're saying it's going to force people to park in the street, why?
Yeah, it's excessive parking out front, it's already a zoo with the parking, with the building across the street.
So...
The people that are in that building parking on Curtis Ave, right here across the street.
What's that got to do with Curtis Ave, when they have six spaces, they're giving you six spaces?
All right, because they're going to lose a spot on Curtis Ave for parking with the curb cut.
Well, and it's part of their house anyway, and, you know, I get it.
Well, yeah, and anybody that comes to visit them in that building will be forced to park out on Washington Court, like I said, that's a very congested area right here. And my second question about this is the excessive parking that they have, we know what's been going on in Quincy with these houses, they're turning into, you know, rooming houses, and they'll have several different people living in the house, and that's one of our biggest concerns. We're trying to keep this neighborhood a single-family neighborhood, and it's losing its appeal, so I'm asking the board, actually I'm begging the board to deny this and try to keep this a neighborhood. Thank you for letting me share.
All right, thanks, Mr. Sullivan, but they do have a Residence B, that is all Residence B there, so, all right, thank you. Anyone else?
We have username, guest.
Hello?
Yeah, who's speaking?
My name is Carolyn Cronin.
Carolyn, Carolyn, hold on, are you an attorney?
No, I am not.
All right, could you please take an oath, Mr. Chin?
Yes, Ms. Cronin, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Yes, I do.
All right, Ms. Cronin, you have the floor.
Okay. I oppose this and hope that you will all vote against it tonight. My biggest issue here is the parking on the street there, it's already a very congested area, you're going to take a spot away, which is going to cause even more issues, and with the parking they have set up at the house on the right-hand side of the house, again, you know, you look like you can fit four cars in there, but I really have a hard time believing that people are going to pull in that way and park. I think they're going to end up parking out, the people who live in this house are going to end up parking out on the street because they're not going to block somebody in the driveway. So you're going to add more problems to the streets, a very congested area with that building, you got the marina, the restaurant down there, trucks up and down the road, people visiting at that Pagnano Towers, and I think we're just adding to the issue. I do have a question, on the right-hand side of the house, is there going to be any grass in between the driveway and the fence at about 120 Curtis Ave?
Yes, three feet, I think it's here, isn't it?
Yes.
Three feet.
Three feet?
Yeah.
Okay. Again, I hope that you oppose this, I don't think it's a good idea for the neighborhood, mainly because of the parking issue.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Cronin. Anyone else opposed or undecided?
Citizen Rotifell.
Citizen Rotifell. Where is he? There he is. Citizen, you want to take an oath, please? John?
My computer's going slow. Yes?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
I do.
Thank you.
I was just thinking, this is the only meeting that you have to actually take an oath, so is this the other ones you can lie, I guess, you only really have to tell the truth that's on it. So, but anyway, I just wanted to ask, are they going to cut that tree down that's in the front yard?
I don't know, if they do, they're going to...
Yes, we will have to cut that tree.
That's really all I wanted to know, I mean, I'm, you know, I really haven't researched this at all, I'm just, you know, undecided, but I like trees, I know, you know, there aren't many trees in Quincy, we're losing a lot of them, and that looks like that's a nice tree, but anyway...
They're going to go to the tree ordinance, just once you take a tree down because you're building something, you have to replenish it, so that will be, either replenish, the money will go into the funds.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. John, anyone else?
Phone number, 947-9689.
It's up top, all right. Who's speaking?
Last four numbers of the phone number, 9689, and somebody was just asking a question in the chat about how phones are speaking, they just have to dial star nine to raise their hand, so if you are calling in on the phone, star nine to raise your hand, and then we'll send you the request to unmute. User 9689, go ahead.
Who am I speaking?
Terry Sullivan.
Terry, could you take an oath, please?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing?
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record.
Terry Sullivan, 108 Curtis Ave.
All right. You have...
So I am opposing this as well.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
He said, okay.
Yes, I am opposing this as well, I live on the opposite corner of my parents', and the parking is awful. I don't think this is a good idea, they're taking away from the greenery, they're making, it's going to be like an apartment complex. I feel like there's going to be too much asphalt, taking away from the greenery, that tree that's coming down. We already have Pagnano Towers there, and then with this, I just feel like it's just going to change everything there. The parking between Hannah Street, Curtis Ave, Washington Court, it's been a nightmare. I've lived there for years.
I know.
I think...
And that's why we asked to make sure we get plenty of parking on that site, so he has six cars on site.
Right, because that's tandem parking, so the only issue is like this tandem parking, say a husband and wife live there and they have a child there, whoever comes home first is going to park, the second person comes home, third person comes home, they're going to say, I'm going to park out on the street because there's a spot there, because I don't want to get up in the morning and move my car for the other two people.
They have three different lanes there now.
Oh, it's three lanes? There was two lanes on the right side of the house.
One on the left.
It's still tandem, though.
I know, but they have three different lanes, so you got one lane, and then there's another...
And there are three tandem lanes, correct?
Right, correct.
Correct, so how are you going to move those cars around?
Real easy, who's coming in first, whoever's coming in first, the other one goes in second, and you got another lane on the other side, whoever's moving their cars, they could probably use the other side of the house.
That's true, but it's not realistic when you think about it, coming home, the husband's working, you know, the next morning, the wife comes home, nobody's going to want to move the cars around.
Was he, was he going to leave it in the street? Is he going to leave it in the street and get a ticket?
How would they get a ticket?
Why, they got parking off-street, they don't need, they don't need a parking permit for the street, they wouldn't get one.
I park on the street, I don't get a ticket. And I live at 108 Curtis Ave.
Right, but you have a...
I do.
All right, so you got parking permit.
I do, on my, yeah, but they don't, they do not pay attention to them. They do not.
Or if you haven't got a ticket, maybe they are.
I'm sorry?
He said if you didn't get a ticket, maybe they are looking to make sure your parking pass is on there. I don't know.
No, no. What is your name again?
Martin Akins, I'm the chairman of Zone.
Okay. I feel like you're just laughing about everything that we've been saying here.
What I'm doing is I'm saying, you have to get a parking permit to park in the street in Quincy, correct?
Okay, right, but I don't have one on my current vehicle.
Oh, I thought you said you did.
No, I have had one, I have had one, and I've had a vehicle where I don't have one, and they do not pay attention to it.
Yeah, well, maybe they should, then, and would have...
Do you live in Quincy?
Yeah, I do, yes, I do.
Do you live in Quincy, Martin?
Yeah.
Do you have issues in your neighborhood with tandem parking, or do you have tandem parking near you?
Yeah.
Like any, like multifamilies, or do you have the single families?
No, I'm in Residence A, single family.
Okay, so that's probably, yeah, if this was being built beside your house, maybe you'd be questioning this as well.
I'm not saying that, I'm saying it's where you buy your house, people have rights that do buy houses.
Right, and my parents bought that house 40, 45 years ago, we grew up in that home, 45 years ago.
I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just saying, people do have rights to come here and come before a meeting and bring it to us. They have these rights.
Okay, so this house was bought as a single family, keep it as a single family, because you know what, the guy that owns the house isn't even going to be living there, he's doing it to make a profit off of it. Leave it as a single family, rent it out to a single family.
All right.
That's my beef here.
All right.
Why are they asking for relief?
They're asking for a finding now, because they changed their plans. What they did is they changed their plans, they're only going up another story, that is just going from a one-and-a-half to a two-and-a-half.
And that's fine, but they're bringing on more parking issues, which is a huge thing in Quincy, as you know. As you know, Quincy is a shitshow with parking, excuse my language. But we're strongly opposed to this, my whole family, and we have a bunch of neighbors that are as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Martin.
You're welcome. Anyone else opposed or undecided?
We do have the username guest with her hand back up.
Yes. Who is this?
Hi, my name is Carolyn Cronin, I just spoke a couple of minutes ago.
Can you already speak?
I did, yeah, but I have one more thing.
Well, you're going to have to hold off to the end of the meeting, after everyone else speaks for a time.
Okay, sure, no problem.
Anyone else? Opposed or undecided? All right, Carolyn, you're up, you already took an oath.
You know, Mr. Akins, we came to this meeting so we could voice our opinions.
Yeah.
You seem to be giving off a lot of attitude. This is concerning, yes.
I'm trying to tell you that people have rights to come here, you're saying they shouldn't...
And we have a right to speak up too, sir.
Exactly, and that's all I'm saying, I never gave you know-nothing, so I don't know where this is coming from, that's all I'm saying is...
Well, you obviously came with already...
I'm trying to explain, you're saying that they're ruining parking, they have six spaces, do you understand that? That's what I'm trying to tell you, what they have.
We understand that, and what we're trying to tell you is that we don't believe that they're going to park all their vehicles into those two, into those two driveways, because like Terry Sullivan just said a few minutes ago, when you come home at night and somebody's in there, are you going to park behind them? Are you going to have to get up at 6 o'clock in the morning to move your car? No, you're going to pull out front and park. It's going to cause an issue to the area, which is already very congested and there's a lot of problems.
Okay.
You already, you already came to the meeting with your decision, we can tell that, but you don't need to be rude to us because we're asking questions.
I'm not rude at all, I'm trying to explain...
Well, you certainly are coming off that way.
I'm not here to argue with you.
That's all I have left to say.
Good, thank you. Anyone else?
Not seeing any further hint.
Our hearing closed. You know, I was trying to explain that when people tell you there's no parking, they're getting, they're going from two parking spaces to six, that's all I'm trying to explain, and it's like, I don't know if they understood it, that's what I was trying to get it through them, that they have four more spaces than they had before, but, I don't know. When people get upset, and I know it, it's, they get upset. People don't like change, they don't like this, I get it, I get it, I get it. People do have a right to come up and have, go to a meeting and have theirs too, and everyone's got a right to say and speak what they want, and that's what we're here for. So...
You have one hand up again, Mr. Chairman.
I already closed the meeting, but I'm going to let them, I'll hold off on that hand for a second. Mr. O'Brien, any comments?
I just want to point out that zoning B permits a two-family, and the parking exceeds the city's requirements by zoning law.
Mr. Chin?
Just to echo what Charlie was saying, I think what I'm hearing from the neighbors is that they have a, they have a concern about the spaces being tandem in nature, as opposed to every single, every single car being able to ingress, egress in and of itself, but there's nothing in the law that requires the parking spaces to be non-tandem or individualized. So to go from two spaces to six is an improvement, and this is Res B, so they have a right to a two-family, if they comply with everything else.
Thank you. Mr. Hemel?
Well, it's Res B, they have a right to a two-family, this is not a complicated finding, they do have three lanes to park, I mean, that's an advantage to basic one-lane tandem parking. I mean, I live in a part of Quincy, my house was a two-family, we could fit six cars in a driveway tandem, it's called cooperation, and, you know, it works. I don't know if it's going to be owner-occupied, I'm not even sure that's relevant, but you're right, you're going from two spaces to six, and it is a Res B, I mean, they have a right to build.
That's all I was trying to explain, like, I thought they were doing good getting six cars, I really did, I thought they were trying to help the neighbors, is what I was thinking. Just with everything going on, if...
Left me.
Frankel?
I agree with the position taken by the neighbors, I'm not a giant fan of tandem parking, I think it's somewhat of a red herring, but until the powers that be decide that that doesn't qualify as two spaces, they have met their burden, Res B, enough spaces, and until that happens, I think they're entitled to what they're looking for, that we should give them what they're looking for.
Charlie? We're going to make sure there's three feet of, on the motion, that they have three feet on the right, and I'd like to add something in there, I want that driveway to slope to the middle, so both sides, it'll slope to the middle, no water will go in the neighbor's house, so...
Be left-hand driveway?
Huh?
The left side, right?
It's the right side, the new driveway, she's worrying about water getting in her mother's house, and I don't blame her, there shouldn't be water going in her house. Yeah, yeah. So if it could just all slope in the middle, so all the water goes out, and it's, don't go in the neighbor's, all right, Charlie? Leave it as a variance.
Oh, sack?
Yeah.
Chairman, before you close, sorry, sorry, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chairman, before you close it, did you want to trust me the hand?
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I forgot. Could you unmute that?
9689, go ahead, you should be able...
Who is this?
Hi, Martin, sorry.
Huh?
Martin?
Yeah.
Hi. So, no, we do understand what you're, you kept saying, you know, you're not understanding what I'm saying, we do understand what you're saying, but our issue is, and I'm sure you all know Pagnano Towers across the street from my parents.
Yeah.
So they changed that a couple of years ago, it used to be elderly only, now it's Section 8, everybody can live there, and anybody that lives in that building now, you have to be registered to 108 Curtis Ave to be able to park in that back parking lot. Half the building is probably not registered, yeah, then half of them are not registered to live in that building, that's why the parking is such a nightmare there. Everybody parks out front on Curtis Ave, Washington Court, and Hannah Street, we have a lot of nurses that come every day to help people in that building, so they're always looking for parking as well, when they come in the morning.
Yeah.
So that's, that's our biggest concern and why we're opposing this.
I understand, I do.
And, you know, just because...
I do.
Yeah, so I just...
Things will change, and...
We've tried to argue with...
And I get it, I really do, I get it, in tandem parking, and it's rules we almost have to follow, but you're still, they're here for a reason, and we asked them three times to go back and change this, change this, because we didn't like what they had, we didn't like what they had, we didn't like what they had, and finally, they come up with a simple thing, dropped, brought it down 900 square feet, just went up straight, and there's a first floor is one apartment, second floor is one apartment, I think they're too better than the second floor.
Yeah, well, hopefully it's not going to become a rooming house, because if it is, then we're going to definitely call on them, for sure, we're going to keep our eyes open.
And they have new laws that they're coming out with for all that stuff, they can't do that, all that stuff's...
Right.
City's done, we're done, I'm done with that too, I got a neighbor across the street that's the same thing, you know, it's a B and B, you're in Res A.
Yeah, my neighbor to the left of me, it's the same thing, they rent out their basement and they rent out their attic, it's like a firehouse next to door to me right now.
And that's the craziness right there, you just got to call, you got to call down here and make sure, like, and they'll go out and check the house, that's what they do here, Mr. Duca Commissioner, I mean, that's his job to come out, you know, people call up, that's his job, and he'll, in a minute, and he tells me about the calls that he gets, you know, when we're not working, we're just shooting the breeze about how many people, and he has to go and write complaints and tickets to, because, but if people don't call, no one's going to know, no one knows.
Exactly.
And they do know, just no one says nothing, you know?
Right.
You know, you know, they feel, um, 'cause they're elderly or something, go, wait a minute, wait a minute, come on. We gotta live here too, we can't want neighbors coming in and out, I don't know either.
Right.
Running around the streets, and, and we shouldn't have that. Thank God all of that's gonna be written and changed very soon.
Right. So is this a done, so is this a done deal that's happening, or do you guys still vote on this, or is this the final?
No, we, we're still gonna vote on, we're discussing and voting on it.
So do you do that tonight?
Yep.
While we're on the call? Oh, right now, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Call up, part of the hearing closed, uh, you have a paper, did you grab it?
The letter?
Yeah, oh, it's right here, I gotta read this letter. It just came. Uh. Came today, so. My counselor, uh, to, I'm not sure, says, hi, Norine, I'm not sure I'll be able to be active participant in the ZBA meeting tonight. So I wanted to pass along the following message to be read regarding the proposal 114 Curtis Ave. After conversations with the neighbors over the phone, email, and our recent communications, the community meeting, I cannot support this proposal in good conscience. Common front yard setback variance sought would provide an unwelcome appeal to the neighbor, neighborhood in addition to the curb cut Curtis Ave would have significant negative consequences. As it currently stands, parking is limited to one side of the street, and there is rarely any street parking spots open for visitors. If this proposal moves forward, displaced cars will need to find parking on other side streets. Further exacerbate in the parking issues, I strongly believe that approval of this, of this version of the plan will be at the overall detriment to the neighborhood. Thank you for consideration, Ian and Karen Rocko. What to Counselor? In Quincy, this former member.
Thank you.
Uh. Uh, it's the first I heard of that, uh. Now, and, and, and he's talking about the plan that they had before, which we didn't like, and we sent back, and we sent it back a couple times. So we all understand, everyone out there, they're taking the footprint they're on, and they're adding another floor up top, and parking to the right, four parking spaces to the right. Charlie, do you wanna make that motion?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, regarding case number 21-91, JCBT Architect for a variance to convert the existing single-family one-and-a-half-story home to a two-and-a-half-story duplex with a two-and-a-half-story rear addition, not anymore, right?
Nope.
With proposed cut, curb cut, and driveway on the right yard with five to six parking places on the premises number six, 114 Curtis Avenue Quincy. I make a recommendation to grant the requested variance subject to the following condition. That there be a three-foot buffer on the right-hand side of the driveway, and the driveway should slope towards the center of, of it. Um. And that way, there'll be a buffer there, uh, on that side.
Mm-hmm, and the water won't go over there, so.
Right.
Second.
Well, and to rip out the driveway on the left.
Yes, yes. Yeah, so the, the left-hand driveway, they're gonna have two spots there, and it won't go further than the house.
Take the asphalt out, right?
Yep, take the asphalt out. Yeah, to the rear, right, left rear, right.
The left drive, left rear driveway. Right on that corner?
Yes.
Yeah, the corner of the house to, uh, the, uh, garage. And that'll turn into grass.
Thank you.
You got all that, Norine?
I did, thank you.
I think it'd be nice if you replaced that tree somewhere on the property, the one they're taking out, the right-side driveway.
Well, they're gonna have to do that anyway, yeah, they're gonna have to go to, uh, the tree owners, when you take something out, when you, when you build, you're gonna have to replace it and put money into the fund so we can go plant some trees somewhere else. But you're right, on the property would be nice too. Uh.
Second.
On the motion? Stand nun, Madam Clerk, can we have a voice vote?
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes, ma'am.
Russell Chen?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Jeff Frankel?
Yes.
Mark Nigus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further, under tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
New business, JPC Architect for variance findings construct a second-floor addition on the side addition in, and side addition to expand the living space on the premises 554 Quarry Street. The applicant, Bonnie, is that you again? Okay, you have the floor.
Okay.
You have the floor.
I'll share the screen.
It's sworn in for the night.
Okay. Okay, um, I wanna clarify just a little bit, um.
Yeah.
Uh, Brian Pomochi, the, uh, counselor, put in on the letter to notify, uh, neighbors that this would be a two-family, I wanna correct that, is only a single-family?
No, it is, it's a single-family home.
Right, single-family addition. So we're seeking, uh, side yard, rear yard, front yard setback. And that's about it, so.
Corner lot, right.
Um, yeah, it's a corner lot. So existing one-car garage, but the clients, the owners seeking a two-car garage, so they're bringing the a, um, addition with the one-story garage on the bottom and two-story, one-and-a-half-story living above. A one-story, um, greenhouse in the rear also, with a once, uh, a two-story addition in the rear.
The greenhouse, that gonna be?
Blast.
Yeah, but it's gonna be on, on, in the yard though, right?
In the yard, it's like a, um, slab with, um.
It's gonna be attached to the house.
Right, attached to the house. The owner love to, um, plant. I'm sorry?
That little addition on the front, you know, the back of the house here, over here?
Yes.
No, right here, that's, you're just bringing a bigger kitchen, that's your bigger kitchen.
Uh, this is bringing a bigger kitchen.
All right. Uh. There's one big home. It's gonna be 79, what is that, 69 feet long? But you're gonna, that, that, that's just for the, uh, that, that one-and-a-half-story. I mean, it's two-and-a-half-story, the bottom story you're gonna use for garage, correct?
The bottom story will be for garage.
Right, right.
This is looking on Quarry Street.
Yep, I know, how it comes down, right?
Yeah, so they didn't like the front, the existing front look, so they wanna, um, bring it out for front yards, uh, variance, so they can dress up the front more. But because the existing, um, basement is, uh, pretty high up on the existing house.
Yeah.
So, yeah, was, uh, I believe we're still under that four-feet requirement for basement, average height.
With the. All right.
Like three foot, like 10 inches or something?
Mm-hmm.
Average three, yeah.
Don't see it. You? I didn't have, you know, wait a minute. Was that seven, seven feet north? Oh no, that's under the ground, I should have added.
Oh, um, and also, there are seven, um, uh, butters are in support of the projects too. And that's, uh, already uploaded into the portal.
Yeah. Uh. Do you have them?
I have them right here, yeah.
Oh, oh, oh. All right, uh. Now, so you got your two-car garage under, and then two parking spaces in front of that.
Yeah.
All right, uh. Still, Brian?
Yeah, just a question, the existing, um, basement, uh, ground floor, as you call it, that goes all the way through to the other side of the house, that's full height?
This side? Let me open.
Uh, the existing, the existing basement.
The existing basement is like this.
Okay, but that's full height, the whole length of the house?
Yes.
Yeah.
Full height, but this side is right on gray.
Okay.
Eight is actually slope up from this side, so.
Yeah.
It slopes back. Yeah, slopes up and back, so this over here is like one step from here, from the first floor over, it's only one step.
Okay. I'm, I'm, looking at it from the Quarry Street end, um, the, where you have it marked existing playroom?
Yep.
That's a full, that's a full
So.
eight-footer on that side?
So this is the basement right here, on the back of the house.
Yeah.
So the gray over here on the first-floor kitchen is like, just walk out.
Oh, okay.
So the average gray is, um, less than four feet overall.
Okay. Is it, you're gonna end up with three livable floors in this?
Yes.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
The basement. The main, the main house, right?
The basement.
What's the height of it?
Most of it is cathedral ceiling.
Okay.
You're doing cathedral ceiling, well, this is say, more like an attic, but a finish, because downstairs a garage.
Yeah, but you're gonna have first, second floor and basement, he's saying, and that ain't part of the house.
Right.
And what's, and what's the height of the building, please?
Like everyone does.
Three, four, five.
If that's livable.
Three, four, five, Charlie.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Chen? Question?
I think that the, uh, the lot is of a size where, um, it can accommodate this, um, addition and, uh, construction. I am happy that they're not approaching the intersection there of, uh, Quarry Street, because that would possibly impede visibility.
Right.
For traffic, so this is setback, and that's where I don't have that concern, and I don't see any fencing being proposed to be put up. That would also impede visibility, so, so far, I'm okay with it.
Yep, very good. Mr. Himmel?
Bonnie, what's with that little hunk of ledge up back there?
Yeah, there, there's a ledge here, existing ledge, so the owner's still thinking if they wanna step this back, the addition, to avoid the ledge war.
Mm-hmm.
They don't want.
Okay, so, so you're not gonna blast it out of there, right?
They don't want to.
Okay.
The where this shown on the plot plan, they're not sure if it's that accurate. But they are proposing this addition for now, and then further evaluate on site.
So you might have to bring that back a foot or something?
Yeah, they might bring it back or cut the corner over here.
Yep.
Well, you could have a hunk of ledge in the basement.
Well, this, there's not gonna be a basement over here.
Buddies that have that.
There's not gonna be a basement over here, that's, that's gonna be the first-floor kitchen.
Oh, okay.
It's like, yeah.
Yeah.
That's all I have, thanks.
All right. Mr. Frankel?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone that'd like to speak in favor?
Gabse.
Edison Roderfeld, you're up.
John Roderfeld again, um, just reminds me, I drive by that was giant right there, this is similar to that, there's giant apartments all up Quarry, it's a nice-sized lot. There's gotta be ledge, that reminds me, like, that whole lot is sort of like a mountain and stuff, so it's not gonna be an easy, um, development, but it's gonna be a giant, nice, new house, it's gonna be worth over a million dollars, maybe 1.5 million, so, um, I think it's good new growth there, I don't think they're really gonna be bothering any of the neighbors, and, um, I'm in favor of this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roderfeld, anyone else wanna speak in favor? Second call?
Not seeing any other hands currently.
Good call.
Seven letters.
I have seven letters here uh, that are in favor of the single-family addition. And. Megan Rention Five County Road, Quincy. Dennis Chen Ten County Road. I don't even know how to pronounce this. Tenon 71 Rogers Street. Bing Hee 51 Rogers Street. Robert Chow Chu 16 Patrick Road. And Candy Yu 16 Patrick Road. I apologize for beating up someone's name here. Celestra Rodriguez 55 Quarry Street. There's seven letters here written.
Thank you.
Favor. Uh, anything correspondence? I have a letter here from the DPW, House 22, 554 Quarry Street, reviewed and about reference. We have no comments. Uh, is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Second call?
Not silent, neither.
Third call, call up, part of the hearing closed. Comments, Charlie?
Say it again?
Comments?
Um, no, I, I, I mean, it's, it's, it doesn't appear to be taking over the site, I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot bigger than what's there, but, um, it's, it looks like it'll be a very nice improvement on that corner.
Beautiful, I can tell it's a, a nice driveway coming up with two-car garage.
No further comments.
Um, Mr. Himmel?
No further comments.
And Mr. Frankel?
No further comments.
Charlie, can we have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number 21-102, JCBT Architect for a variance slash finding to construct a second-floor addition, and in addition to expand the living space on the premises numbered 554 Quarry Street Quincy, I make a motion to grant the requested variance and finding.
Second in.
On the motion? Stand nun, Madam Clerk, can we have a voice vote?
Yes, Charlie O'Brien?
Yes, please.
Russell Chen?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Jeff Frankel?
Yes.
And Mark Nigus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further under tonight's business, ZBA 2221. Britton Munson for variance.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt you for one second? I'm sorry, I'm just see, I'm just seeing a chat that came through as you guys were voting there, they had a question, I don't know if you wanna address that real fast.
What is it?
Username KP.
What is it? What's the question? What happened this? That's Jonathan. Oh, Jonathan did it.
Go ahead, KP.
Yes, hello. Uh, my question was that in the information that we got in the mail, um, about this proposal, there was nothing about, it, it, it was unclear until I saw page nine of that, uh, that, that, those pages that were put up. So this, on the, on the information I saw on the site, it appeared as though this were for a two-story addition to the side of the house and another addition to the back of the house. Can I clarify that this is actually adding another, uh, floor to the main house as well?
It is, it's a one-and-a-half-story on the main house, correct? Now they're gonna go two-and-a-half.
Okay, wow, that's a lot.
No, it's like, any, any house has two-and-a-half stories usually, most houses have two-and-a-half stories.
Except that this is already on a raised area, so it will.
Well, it's on a mountain, yeah, I mean, it's, but the, but the basement's like ninety percent of it, eighty percent of it's in the ground, so it's like, you know, uh, but it's, yeah, I, I know what you're saying, but it is really a two and a half story house. And then out front, they have their garage with a floor and a half on top, so it's a garage in the bottom with the, uh, master bedroom above it.
And now, the other question that I had is about, um, it, it, it is, this is a small dead-end street, I'm wondering, I'm county road, I'm on county road, uh, how is the construction going to affect access to our house and, uh, our homes, and what will the, uh, proposed time period be?
There's rules in the city of Quincy, if you want to call Mr. Duca, he can go through everything fire, he really can, and he can tell you all the rules they have to abide by, what they have to do for construction, time, time, huh?
There'll be no impact.
No, there'll be no problem there because they'll, they'll, they'll be on site, they, they can't block roads, they just can't, it's impossible, I mean, if you're moving in a bundle of wood in a big truck and it takes four minutes or something just to drive the truck in there, that's about it.
Okay.
They, they can't, they can't, yeah, they can't get in the way of people's, uh, you know, firemen has to get down there, they, they have to have it.
Because we have no sidewalks on our street, so that, you know, people are walking.
Right, right.
And who was, who was it that you said I could call?
Mr. Duca, you can call Mr. Duca, Commissioner Duca.
Is that D U K A?
D U C A.
C A.
Uh, uh, it's six one seven, three seven six, one four five six. They're gonna get four hundred calls, they're getting them to the whole state.
How are you on that, Mr. Duca?
He loves it.
All right, can we get back a screen here? Am I missing a screen, is that you, John, or me?
You should be good to go.
I got a big live Zoom here, some guy's talking up here.
Uh, not seeing anything on my end, I got a gallery view, do you have?
Uh, I would say.
X this one?
Yes.
Try that one?
We all see you.
I can't see me.
That, that's really a bad thing.
You might have to change the viewer angle.
All right, this ain't my, uh, forte, by the way, I don't know. There it is. Hey, I see a picture coming, come on, baby. Come on, baby. Hey, hey, we're back. Way to go, Mr. Duca, he's done this a long, long, so many years, I know, two years every day, da-da-da-da-da.
Two years, most of my life.
Three times a week.
I was parking up there.
All right. Now, let's get down to, uh, twenty-two, twenty-one, Britton Munson, eleven Chick Street. Have a little space below the floodplain elevation on the premises eleven Chick Street. Yep, can I representative here?
Uh, yes, sir, I am.
Are you attorney?
I am.
You are?
I am, I'm also the homeowner, but just happen to be.
I just wanted to make sure, so you don't have to take an L D, I want you to tell us what you want to do.
Sure. So what currently our basement is completely empty, it has been gutted, the studs are still there from what was there originally, uh, as someone was living down there previously, they had a variance, um, but it, the variance expired once they passed away. So what we're asking for is to do very little minimal work to use the space again, um, the main thought to it is, A, just to put an office down there, um, so not a living space, no, um, actual closets or anything, so it would just be using the one wall that is already framed and just closing it in.
Are you gonna put a new foundation out there on that left side?
No, this is, um, uh, everything that is enclosed already underneath, so there's no outside work.
Foundations all the way around though, it is?
It is.
Oh, all right.
Yep, foundations all the way around, we actually are putting in a, a new door to walk in there from our parking right now, and, uh, we found the previous person, whenever they had put the door in, uh, actually had to cut some of that actual foundation wall to be able to put it in.
All right.
So they put it all the way around, but the reason we're asking mainly is, uh, we're planning to put a pool just off to the back there, uh, we haven't submitted that application yet, but being beach and pool, it would be very nice to be able to come in, and there was a bathroom that was there at one time, just to rebuild it very minimally, uh, to be able to shower off or go to the restroom instead of having to go upstairs and track through the entire house. So that's what we're really asking for, is just to put a minimal bathroom there for that use, and then build out the existing wall that's already there to use as an office space. Everything else will be minimal for flood reasons.
Way, right?
So concrete would be just stained and steel and sealed, uh, so that there's nothing there if there was floodwaters that comes in, um, so it would be very, very minimal.
Put over the other one, right, like, saying.
Chairman, you would just.
Yeah, I did that. Uh, is that unmuted?
You are unmuted now, yep.
Okay. So you just, uh, now that, that, that addition. You, you, are you gonna rip that half floor or whatever's there down, or you going up?
I.
It's just gonna be that half floor addition on that side?
What I'm kind of talking about is only in the basement, nothing going up.
Fit out.
So you're just gonna fit it out?
Correct, there, there are walls that are already there, they've been framed, but they're just framed at the moment from what was pre-existing before, so I just want to frame them in, put the door back in place to be able to use as an office, there was a bathroom that was ripped out, and I just want to put the bathroom back in.
Yeah, all right. I don't know, I'm, I'm just looking at this, and it says it's got an addition, it's got beside you.
That, that, that was the previous variance that we went through, I think, last month, or maybe the one before. And that one did get approved.
That's what I'm, losing my mind.
That's okay.
Complete the basement. That's what you want to do, complete your basement, correct?
Correct, not for actual living space as in a bedroom, but.
Mr. Duca, go ahead.
Yeah. Uh, all right. Good evening, uh, board members, Jay Duca for the record, Director of Inspection Services. Um, I, I don't usually weigh in on these cases, as you know, as the floodplain manager for the city of Quincy, I have to be opposed to any fit out of the basement, uh, anything that's below the base flood elevation is regulated by the FEMA floodplain, and the city's insurance rating is one of the best in the state, it is the best in the state, because we allow no building, uh, according to the building code, you cannot build below the base flood. Um, in order to keep that rating intact, um, we don't allow, in, in accordance with the building code, we don't allow, uh, building any, any basements, anything that's below the base flood, so, uh, I, I would have to give my opinion that, uh, this variance should not be granted, thank you.
All right, if something is already there, say it's already there, like that house is already there?
It was, it was granted to the original owner.
No, but I'm just, I'm just saying like, if it's already there, and you're not doing substantial renovation, you can, you can remodel it. But then you're gonna have to call your insurance company because you're under the flood.
Well, I think what he's doing is.
Putting the couch, he's putting like a little chair down there and, and, and just to work, and that's what.
Yeah, I, I know. The, the prior, um.
You are, Jay, you are correct, the prior owner had a variance to actually live down there.
Correct.
They had, they had built it out completely and had like even their laundry down there, the whole nine yards, so that was all ripped out when we bought the property. The studs for the actual walls are, are still intact all the way through there, um, but no sheetrock on them, we took the, the doors, we're taking off all that.
I appreciate that information, I remember that woman who lived there, I believe it was a fire, uh, had no place to live, and it was, it was out of sympathy back, probably in the early two thousand, um, yeah, we allowed her to live in the building while the renovations went on, but that it would, that variance would go away when she was, um, no longer there, so.
Correct.
You know, I, I, I don't know of any other variances that we've granted for anything below the, but, uh, floodplain, um, and part of the reason I was, the federal government, uh, gives a fifteen percent discount on flood insurance, it, it translates to about ten million dollars in saving property owners in the city of Quincy, uh, probably don't realize it because I know it's expensive, but there is a ten million dollar savings on, on, on account of our ra, our good rating, um, so, uh, again, as floodplain manager, I, I would have to be opposed to this variance, thank you.
Okay.
All right, uh, you want to, uh, withdraw?
Sure, why not?
All right, so we won't vote on, uh, we could, we could just withdraw without prejudice.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number.
I didn't know there was that much money.
Ready?
I didn't either.
Charlie?
Um, Mr. Chairman, regarding case twenty-two dash twenty-one, um, Britton Munson for variance to allow habitable space below the base flood elevation on the premises numbered one, I, um, excuse me, eleven Chick Street Quincy, I make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
Second, okay.
Madam Clerk, can we have a voice vote?
Yes, Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chen?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Jeff Frankel?
Yes.
Martin Akins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Munson, uh.
That's okay. Thank you.
I didn't know there was even that much money saved on the insurance.
Good information to know going forward.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. O'Brien?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Both, one more meeting, guys.
Okay.
All right.
And we're back at the dungeon.
And we're back in the dungeon. It'll be nice, it'll be nice to meet in person, I'll tell you that.
Yes, you will.
Recording stopped.